Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay. Announcement is made, the adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 of NETSEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Dede.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Juesmore.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mandell.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Flavate, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Mr. Wendell.
Thank you very much. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with our agenda, of which we have one item, this meeting is open to the public, so if any members of the public would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
This is, you're here to oppose the application, correct? This is about anything that's not on tonight's agenda.
Yep. There'll be time for public comments on the agenda item later. We'll make sure there's time for you. All right. Seeing nobody else come forward, we'll close the public portion and move forward with our agenda. For the record, we have Mr. Fageri joining us today.
Hi, Bruce.
All right. On the agenda, we have application number 21:520, CQC Builders LLC regarding property at 27 Iroquois Ave, Block 516, Lot 8. This is for a minor subdivision plan with C variance.
Good evening.
Yes, you may.
My name is Stephen Sheppes of the applicant's attorney. Seated to my right is Glenn Bott. He's the principal of the applicant entity. Manning the easel is Joseph Minecki, he's a licensed professional engineer. In the audience is Alex Doherty, he's a licensed professional planner. They'll all be providing testimony this evening in their respective roles. So as Mr. Minecki sets up the easel, I'll just give you a few words of introduction, if I may. The subject property is in an R4 zone. The total lot area of the property is 12,000 square feet. Minimum lot area required in the R4 zone is 6,000 square feet. So we're proposing a minor subdivision whereby we propose two separate lots, each compliant with minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet. We comply with all of the bulk standards of the ordinance except for one. The ordinance requires lots have minimum lot width of 60 feet, whereas the lots proposed would be 50 feet. The property as it exists today has dimensions of 100 feet of frontage on Iroquois Avenue and 120 feet of depth multiplied out to 12,000 square feet. There is an existing single-family house on the subject property. It is supposed to be demolished and removed, and two new single-family homes are proposed on each lot. So the use is permitted, so we're here before this board, we do have jurisdiction, and we have a minor subdivision with compliant lot area. We meet all the bulk standards except for the lot width. Also, in conjunction with the application, we are requesting a soil movement permit. The ordinance requires that when you're, I guess, moving soil either in or out, more than, I think, it's 100 cubic yards, you have to apply to the board. So we're applying, so we included that in our notice, and we made the application and paid the appropriate fee. So that's the nature of the application, so without further ado, I'm going to ask Mr. Bott, he's going to be our first witness, we can have him sworn.
If you could hold up for a second, usually we like to take care of our waivers.
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay. Ms. Flavate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did recommend several waivers, which are specified in our memo regarding wetlands determination, highlands exemption, and various other matters. We did ask for more testimony on whether there were any protective covenants or deed restrictions. We asked for testimony on some issues that we raised in our memo regarding fences, retaining walls, and landscaping. And then there were several corrections, which we noted that if the board chooses to approve this application, would need to be made on the final plans regarding some of the technical things that are on the plans. Otherwise, we recommended several waivers, which are laid out.
All right.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board about the waivers? All right. Seeing none, I'll accept the motion on the waivers.
Don't move, Mandell.
Motion to accept the waivers, Mandell. Do we have a second?
Second, Hernandez.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. All right. Waivers are approved.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, very good. I'm going to ask that Mr. Bott be sworn, and then what I said.
Do you swear for and tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Sir, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. It's Glenn Bott, G.L.E.N.N.B.O.T.T. And my wife and I are co-owners of CQC Builders.
Okay.
All right, very good, Mr. Bott, I have a few questions for you. In conjunction with this application, you just advised the board that you're one of the owners of the company, that's the applicant. Is the applicant the owner of the property at 27 Iroquois?
Yes.
Okay, and how long have you owned the property?
Eight months.
Now, why don't you tell us a little bit about how it was that you came to purchase the property, what it is you're proposing here tonight?
I took a look at it with a realtor and determined that it looked like a nice piece of property, but the house wasn't this repair or substandard.
Could you please speak into the mic?
Yeah. Sorry. Substandard construction. As, you know, a builder, you look at the way the floor joists are undersized and just in general, it needed everything to be done to it, and I thought it was beyond repair. It really was a tear down.
Okay, so what is it you do for a living, and how does that relate to the property at 27 Iroquois?
I've been in construction for 35 years, own my own business since 1986, and started building new homes in 1998. I've built, I'm a small guy, so I've only built 14 houses, but they're, you know, I oversee everything myself, so I, you know, one project at a time, basically, I try to make sure I have a good product.
All right, now, Mr. Bott, in conjunction with this application, we had next photographs of the house at 27 Iroquois to the application, so all the board members have it, and likewise, presumably, it's published as an opportunity. So I'm going to ask you to take a look at it. It's a series of eight photographs, so do you recognize those photos?
Yes.
Counsel, just hold on with me one second. Nora, can you, I don't, I didn't see those photos as part of my packet. Was that included with the board members?
I have them.
These would be photographs of the existing building, right, counsel?
Yes, sir.
If you have the aerial shot, I think I might get it.
There was nothing in my package.
No, I don't.
So, counsel, just so you're aware, the photographs you're going to be referring to were not part of the board's packet, so the board does not have those, so if you want to, I think the best you could do is you can refer to them and then let the board review them after Mr. Bott is talking about, or if you have another copy for Mr. Bott to look at while it gets passed around to the board?
There's actually only four pictures, not eight, so we'll hand those off.
Okay. All right, so why don't we have those marked for the purposes of the record as A1, and why don't you let counsel mark it? So, Steve, those are the same or different?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's mark it A1. And then we'll have...
Why don't you start down there with Steve and, yeah?
You know what, I'd give them both. Yeah, I know what else to say.
Mr. Napolitano, why don't we do this? Why don't you hand me down that one?
And we'll start over here with Mr. Dede.
Well, Mr. Mealy, I'm sorry, I saw you over there. Start with Mr. Mealy on one side and work our way in the middle. All right, all right, and there we go. So A1 is a series of four colored photographs. You agree with me, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Of current site condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would say this, I have attached it, so maybe it's on the packet itself, is that possible?
They don't seem to have it in front of them, but it doesn't matter, we've got it marked as A1, and they're looking at it, so why don't you go ahead?
The applications, you only submit three of them, so maybe the engineer and the planner have them.
All right, well, Mr. Bott, you've seen these photographs, 1 through 4.
Yes.
Do the photographs fairly and accurately reflect the condition of the house, of the property today?
Yes.
And is it fair to say the house is kind of skewed to one side of the lot?
Yes, it's almost all the way to the left.
Okay, now...
Counsel, one second. Mr. Bott, you have a very low voice, and you're going to have to really get close to that microphone.
I'm sorry.
That's good. Okay. Good, counsel, I'm sorry.
No problem, I appreciate it. Now, Mr. Bott, is it fair to say that all of the improvements on the property are proposed to be removed, the driveway, the house?
Yes.
All right, now, you're proposing two new houses. Can you tell us about the houses that you're proposing?
Yeah, they're single-family, two, four-bedroom houses with nice size, nice open floor plan on the ground floor. I recently built this house twice in Booton, and here are some pictures of what it looks like completed.
Why don't we get those marked as A2? We don't have those either.
All right, so why don't we just mark that as A2, and then you can hand that up to the board? I'll put it right here by the attic vent where it's, where it could be seen.
These are the homes you want to build?
Yes.
No, these have been built.
Counsel will agree with me that it's...
While you're walking back, is that...
No, 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 you can't, he's a witness, you can't ask him questions while he's walking back.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Sheppes, you agree with me that those, that what we just marked as A2 are representative photos of similar homes produced by the witness?
I think you could actually go a little further, that you built those houses, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bott, and that this is the house that you're proposing?
This is the same house plan, yes.
Okay. And you've submitted architectural plans in conjunction with this application?
Yes, I have, yes.
And those plans are what you agree, that if the board grants the approval, that you'll build those houses?
Yes.
Now, there were some comments from the, I believe it was from the board planner, relative to attic plans and a question as to whether or not the house was indeed two and a half stories. Now, if you agree that whatever it is that's required by ordinance, that the house would comport with the ordinance requirement, be no more than whatever's permitted by ordinance?
Yes, I do, yeah.
And likewise, there was a question as to the possibility of making some modification to one of the two houses so that they wouldn't look exactly the same.
Yes.
Okay, now, have you come up with something with your architect to try and provide a little architectural variety?
Yes, my architect came up with a plan that would change the roof line in the front, change, I have a front porch that runs all the way across on that one, and he had changed it to a portico in front, just over the front door, a gable, as well as making it, the windows on the left side of the house bump out about six inches, just to give it a little definition and change the...
Okay, so is it fair to say that should the board grant this approval, that you would accommodate the concerns raised by the board planner in her memo as to this architectural variety?
Yes.
Yet everything would comply with the ordinance as it relates to the structure itself?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything further of Mr. Bott.
All right. Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Bott?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mandell?
Is the house currently occupied?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Napolitano? Would you say that the homes that are going to be built are similar to the homes that are on the block now? Or are these considered with larger?
There's a mix of homes on that block. There's some newer homes, and then there's some existing older homes.
All right, so these are mostly older homes in this block, and these will be larger in size. Is that accurate to say?
No, there's some newer homes as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So what about the houses right next to it? Right on each side of the...
They're older homes.
Are they single?
They're all single family, yes.
We do have a planner that will address the...
Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions from the board, oh, go ahead, Mr. Mealy?
Looking at PB01, the front and right elevations, I don't see a height from the finished grade to the top of the ridge net. What is that?
Mr. Mealy, I think that if I can, I would hope that that is a very prescient question, and I think that that question may be best answered by one of the applicant's professionals on that issue.
Okay.
When it comes time for them to testify. So if we can, we know that, we know that's a question to be answered for Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
I'm sure counsel and his professional will handle that one.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Seeing no other questions at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public for questions only of Mr. Bott.
Of the testimony that he provided. There'll be more testimony.
Correct. All right. Seeing no one come forward, please continue with your next witness. Our next... I'm sorry? This would, yeah, the public portion would be your opportunity, but what we tried to do is limit it to questions that you have of the person who just gave testimony. So if you have...
Not basically questions, but we did go over to homeowners that are on the block and received letters, so we have a petition regarding...
So if I can, just go over the procedure and how this works so that you're aware of it. So this is, this is very similar to like a trial. It's not really a trial, but it's a, you have witnesses, and there's testimony, and then when the witness is done, you can ask questions of the witness. If you have a statement you wish to make, I'm sure the chairman would agree with me, that that would be after all the testimony is provided by the applicant, you can then provide your statement.
Statement.
Right. However, let me tell you, let me be very clear right now. If you have questions of a particular witness, you should ask them after that witness is done. So if somebody has said something you want to ask them a question about, you should ask when that person is done testifying. If you just want to make a statement, please wait until the entire testimony is done, then you can make the statement. Does that make sense?
We have patience.
You have patience, okay.
No problem.
Just want to interrupt.
No worries.
Yep, fair enough.
Just want to make sure that you're aware.
Okay. I believe we're ready for your next witness.
Okay, very good. Our next witness is Joseph Minecki. Mr. Minecki is a licensed professional engineer, so he's here this evening to address engineering issues related to the project.
Joe, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear for and tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Absolutely. Joseph S. Minecki, M.I.A.N.E.C.K.I. Jr., and I reside at 9 Middale Avenue, Toaco, New Jersey.
All right. Counsel, your witness?
Very good. Mr. Minecki, would you please state your professional credentials on the record as a licensed engineer?
Sure. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I graduated, went bachelor's in civil engineering, bachelor's science in civil engineering in October of 1990. Four years thereafter, I received my professional engineering license, which I started Minecki Consulting Engineers. My practice specializes in site plan subdivisions, environmental permitting, wetlands permitting, flood hazard area permitting for industrial, commercial, residential sites. I've appeared before at least 50 zoning boards and planning boards throughout Morris County, Sussex County, Bergen County, Passaic County, and...
Have you ever testified as a professional engineer before this board?
Eight years ago, seven, eight years ago, yes.
Okay. Have your credentials changed since then?
No, they haven't changed.
That's very good. I offer Mr. Minecki his license.
Any members of the board have questions about the credentials of this witness? All right. Seeing none, the witness is acceptable. Mr. Wendell, Wendell, have you sworn him in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's been a while, but yes.
That works.
Of course.
All right, now, Mr. Minecki, in conjunction with this application, can you tell me, was there prepared a base survey upon which this plan was...
Yes, it was, it was prepared by Lake Land Survey.
Okay, now, in conjunction with that, can you tell us, what was the date on this survey, or how recent has it been?
Less than a year old. It's dated June 21st, 2021.
So why don't you walk us through what exists on the property? If you can give us the lot dimensions, lot area, improvements on the property, and then what's proposed in the way of this application?
And, Mr. Minecki, I know you have the usual customary easel with your papers on there. Why don't we just, those are all the site plan subdivision submissions that you've given to the board?
Yes.
All right? There's nothing new or different in there?
No, they're the exact same ones that the board members...
Okay. So, counsel, if it's okay, we'll mark this set as A3.
That's fine.
Subdivision plans.
I guess I'll mark the cover sheet.
That'd be fine, Mr. Minecki, I appreciate it.
I assume that's the lot we're looking at right there, I'm here at 4.
Six. Six. Got to get through the six before we make it to the seven.
Yeah, I got to read it.
Okay.
Counsel?
All right, very good. Mr. Minecki, give us the lot dimensions, lot area, existing improvements, and then if you can walk us through...
Sure. As Mr. Sheppes pointed out earlier, the property fronts on Iroquois Avenue, it's on the southerly side or the high side of Iroquois Avenue. The property, it has 100 feet of frontage and 120 foot in depth, and so for a total of 12,000 square foot. Currently, there exists a home, an existing home as Mr. Bott, in Mr. Bott's picture, it's located on the easterly side of the property, on the left side of the property, if they're looking at the property from the road, which is located over in this area right in here. That house extends from within, I guess, 10 feet of that easterly property line, it extends across the frontage of the property, just past the proposed subdivision line. Again, we're looking to subdivide the property, so we're basically, being it's 100 feet of frontage, we split the lot exactly in half, two 6,000 square foot lots with 50 feet of frontage each. Those are the two, that's the variances we're asking for, where 60 feet is required, we're requesting 50 feet. We have 50 feet of frontage across both lots. Existing drainage in the area, the high side of the lot is the westly side of the lot, all stormwater essentially comes down across the lot and flows into a budding lot, 9 to the east, or out into Iroquois Avenue. Again, there was an existing home, and there was no other improvements on the property other than a home, it's a simple driveway, a covered garage on the left side, and shed. The house is served by municipal water and sanitary sewers, as well as the new one will also. Under the proposed condition, we're proposing two new homes that are located right here, outlined in the red, one here and one here. They're conforming with, completely conforming with regard to the bulk requirements. They meet side yard setback, rear yard setback, front yard setback. We comply with building height, we comply with block coverage, impervious coverage, so we're fully compliant with regard to the dimensions of the property. And again, so we're only asking for the frontage variances. They're going to be, each one's going to have its own driveway. Currently, the driveway on the lower lot, or the left lot, the easterly lot, is on the easterly side, it's right in here. We're taking that driveway out of there, because the house next door has this driveway immediately above it, so we figured we'd give it a separation, so we flopped the house, and we have the driveway on the right side or the westerly side of the new lot. That would be new lot 8.02. On the other lot, we did the same, followed the same suit and had the driveway to give adequate separation between the driveways and allow for grading between the two lots. We're proposing elevated wood decks. As far as tree removals going on, that was pointed out in the planner's memo, we're removing two larger trees. One tree is located right here, it's a 36-inch diameter tree right here, and then there is a 60-inch diameter tree which we're going to be removing right here. Both those would have to be removed. I know we pointed out in the memos that we would meet with the town forester if necessary for replacement if necessary, and the applicant will agree to do whatever plantings are necessary for that. Is there any questions on this plans? I'll go to the grading, drainage, and utility plan.
You know, Mr. Minecki, there was a question asked by Mr. Mealy...
Building height.
As to the building height. Now, I have a to-scale version of the architectural plans if you need them.
Right. The minimum require, the building height requirements for the zone is two and a half stories or 35 feet. The lower lot, lot 8 point, or the upper lot, 8.01, proposing a building height of 28 feet. So we're far underneath the maximum allowable, and on lot 8.02, which is the lower lot, proposing 29.3 feet. Now, those elevations are, those are based on average grade around the building as required by ordinance. So basically, we take a series of, you know, maybe I'll go to the next sheet real quick. I think it shows it on there. Yes. Now, I'm referring to the grading, drainage, and utility plan. The building height is calculated based on a series of elevations around the perimeter of each building, come up with an average grade, and then we calculate the building height from there. So they're both compliant, and they're both substantially below the requirement for the zone.
Now, Mr. Minecki, before you jump off of this sheet, I noticed that there is some proposed plantings on both the east and west side of the mother lot outside.
Yes, we're... Hopefully, the new homes, not the existing, they're proposing plantings, evergreen plantings along, on the low side, along the easterly property line, a row of conifer hedges, and also along the western line, a row of conifer hedges to provide screening in between the two lots, adjacent budding lots.
What height are you proposing on initial plantings?
I believe that six, 48 inches on center, so they're relatively, they're arborvitae, so they're four feet on center, and proposed six feet high up planting. And they grow about foot, foot and a half a year. They'll grow pretty good. They're fast growers.
Now, Mr. Bott, do you understand that should the board grant this approval, you'd be required to install those plantings as part of a CO?
Yes.
Now, also in the planner's memo, they also requested some plantings along the front of the building, along the retaining walls to take the impact away from the retaining walls in the front yard, so I did discuss that with Mr. Bott also, and he would agree to put some low shrubbery in front of the retaining walls. Now, these retaining walls, just so everybody knows, they're not six-foot-high retaining walls, they're generally two-foot-high retaining walls, so they're very small, they're almost landscape walls, but, you know, they're about two-foot high, and we will agree to put small bushes in front of them to help break it out.
Please continue.
These are the retaining walls I'm referring to right here, one here, one here. And again, the maximum, the highest wall proposed is right here at the intersection of the driveway for the lower lot, and that's three feet right here. And this dies down to essentially one foot, these ranges from one to two foot, all these one to two foot, one to two foot. Now, and I staggered in here too, so we don't have a higher wall, so everything doesn't look, nothing looks massive here or out of character. With regard to stormwater runoff, the property has no stormwater infrastructure at all at this point, so we're looking to tie in, the two houses, each house is going to have its own dry well, so all the roof areas for both dwellings are going to be going to either one of the, one of the two proposed dry wells, and there's an emergency overflow, and the emergency overflow is directed to Iroquois Avenue, so there would be no direct discharge or shallow concentrated flow going to any adjacent or abutting property. And there will be a reduction, because the existing home has no, like I said, stormwater improvements at all right now, and both houses are going to have it.[1720.12] And there will be a reduction because the existing home has no, like I said, stormwater improvements at all right now. And both houses are going to have it. The increase in impervious coverage is somewhere around 1,300 square feet, which is the footprint generally of each home. So we're providing mitigation for two 1,300 square foot homes. So there will be a slight reduction in stormwater runoff. Although you don't perceive it, there will be a reduction.
Okay, so is it fair to say, Mr. Minneke, that should the board grant this application and this home get built, that there will be no increase in stormwater runoff affecting the adjoining property?
That's correct. In fact, there might be a slight improvement to the downhill lot on lot 9 to the east. Because currently, all that water from this house currently goes across their yard. Where now all this water is going to be directed out to the dry well. So they may see a, they could have a perceptible improvement.
Now, to the best of your knowledge, does the plan that you present here this evening comply with all of the town's ordinances with regard to grading and drainage?
Yes. Yes.
Now, Mr. Minneke, we also petition the board, as is required by chapter 350 entitled Soil Removal and Relocation, for permission to excavate 250 cubic yards of material from this property.
Right.
Okay, is it fair to say that without removing the soil, you wouldn't be able to build these houses?
Correct, and more importantly, I was concerned about the height of the houses. So by me lowering these houses, by bringing these, excavating into the land and lowering these houses, also allowed me to bring down the overall height of the house. Because there's a cut all along this, adjacent along the westerly property line. So that's going to bring these houses down. And that's how I was able to achieve the 28, 29 foot high building height as opposed to the maximum allowable of 35.
And how much of a cut are you proposing?
Like two or three feet.
Now, is it fair to say that we would comply, Mr. Bott would comply with all of the requirements in chapter 350 of the town's ordinance as it relates to soil removal?
Yes.
And we provided in the application the routes that would be taken? So we would agree to limit it to those routes which would be Iroquois to North Bevillwick. And then once we got to North Bevillwick, either make a left by the golf course or make a right go down to Hill Tamaco. So either go up through Putin or down to Montclair. So we'll get out of Parsippany as quickly as we can. Is that fair to say, Mr. Bott?
Quickly, I was going to hit on the architectural, although not the project architect. There was a question about the different architectural features of the front to make it look different.
Why don't we mark this as A4 since you're referring to the architectural plans?
All right, so there's two sheets here, so maybe A4 and A5, or do you want me to do both?
Well, we'll just call the architectural, they're both the architectural plans?
Yeah, they're on two separate sheets.
So let's just call them, let's just call them A4 architectural plans. And you're not testifying as an architect tonight, but you're just using it for reference.
I'm just using it just to show the board. Because, Mr. Bott, there was a question about making the houses don't look exactly the same. And as you can see, the house with the front porch and the columns around it resembles the pictures that Mr. Bott previously gave out. That's what this house is. And the revised one, which the board hasn't seen, eliminates that front porch, puts a portico over the front door and changes the roof line slightly to come up with two different looking houses, maintaining the same footprint. Footprint and generally the same interior layout.
Now, as the saying goes, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. We made this suggestion, should the board find it more desirable that they have two houses with two front porches?
So that's up to the board. You can either put two the same or two different.
And, Mr. Bott, even if they built the same house, is it fair to say you have different colors like you did in the photographs? So it wouldn't look like mirror images?
Yes, the two houses I, it just because are actually, there's one house in between.
You need the microphone.
The two houses that I provided the pictures of are on the same street with one house between them. To me, even though they are the same plan, the differences in color and everything kind of makes it acceptable. I like.
All right, so you'll go with whatever, what I need the board to prefer. Very good.
I must admit, in this age of COVID, I would prefer front porches. On both.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I don't think we're done with testimony yet.
I know, but on this, this two design.
Okay.
Would it be possible to turn one house into a left and one into a right?
With the grading, that would be a grading challenge because I need to, I need to have the dry wells basically where I show them in order to make the grading work. So that would then most likely negate me being able to have a dry well in one of the two lots. Where I think in all honesty, the dry well, the stormwater improvements are more important than, you know.
Well, this is aesthetics and that's the reason I suggested left and right, they would look different.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you. And I would have probably have done that, but for the grading, I have to, you know.
Okay.
So that was one of two houses. So and the stormwater improvements are just general seepage in the ground with an emergency overflow typical. And that's really it.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, Mr. Minneke.
Counsel, I think that Mr. Mealy had a question about, Mr. Mealy, maybe you repeat it. You say things so much better than I do.
I was referring to the overall height.
Oh, the ridge?
In addition to that, if I may, excuse me. In Ms. Favati's report, our planner, on the paragraph entitled Building Height, page three, I believe it is, she states, "The applicant should provide a floor plan of the attic story to confirm compliance." I don't see that in the materials that you issued to us.
Mr. Bott did have that done. It wasn't, they weren't submitted, it was done after the submission. But he did, he did have, his architect did prepare the attic story area to make sure it complies with all the interior, interior ceiling heights and all that. And it is compliant with the maximum two and a half stories, so it's not going to count as a three story.
Well, then I relate back to my original question. Why isn't the total height to the roof vents shown on one of these plans, on any of these? They're not. I want to confirm that you're below 35 feet, which is the ordinance.
The 35 feet in the ordinance, and the planner can correct me if I'm wrong, is measured, it's from the average grade around the building to the midpoint of the highest, of the highest ridge.
It's not the highest.
It's not the highest point.
Okay.
It's the way that definition reads.
I understand.
But you know Joe. Tell him anything.
No, if we can just let, if you don't mind me, I want to make sure I'm not going to give you a wrong answer. We'll let the next expert come up and then I'll calculate it out.
That's fine.
And then I'll come back up if necessary and I'll give you the number.
Thank you.
And going back a second, Mr. Minneke, you showed, I think you flipped over it. There was, Mr. Mealy had asked about the floor plan for the attic. And then when we got to that page, there you go. So are we, and counsel, can you just clarify this for us? PB5, is that a new sheet that the board does not have? Or is that an amended sheet?
I'm not sure if the board has it, but I can say Glenn, Mr. Bott sent this to me last, I believe, a week ago.
Okay, so let me, let me clarify this, just for the record, so we're clear. The PB5 that the board has shows on one side of the page, a second floor plan. On the other side of the page, a roof plan that does not show, it doesn't say attic, it says roof plan. But, Mr. Minneke, what you're saying is what you have in front of you there is something that demonstrates the size of the attic.
Right, the compliance with the, I guess, the interior floor space ceiling height. For instance, area hash in here, it says attic floor area over seven foot zero inches. Clear height, 154 square feet.
Okay, so, so one, Mr. Minneke, I'm making you really use that blue pen.
It's okay, I'll mark it.
Can you, can you just flip over? And I think it would be appropriate to mark that as A5 because that's on the exhibit the board has. And let's just be a little bit clearer about this. And I know these are not plans that you, from your office, that you produced, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's, so, Ms. Minneke, and I just want to be sure that counsel and the board is with me on this one. That PB5 is a revised PB5 to include what you referred to as the hashed area showing this, the actual footprint of the attic?
Of the attic, yeah, the attic space that has a ceiling height greater than seven foot.
Okay, and.
That's key factor to the ordinance that we, I'm not, this is more of the architectural. That there only a certain percentage of the attic has a ceiling height greater than seven foot four would be considered a third story.
Okay, and what is, you stated before and I missed the, missed the notation. What is the size of that hashed mark?
154 square feet.
Now, I know Mr. Mealy would ask this question, so I'm going to beat him to it for one second.
Propose lot 8.01. There's another one for lot 8.02.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's stay, let's stay with, let's stay with, let's stay with the one, let's stay with this one for a second. And was that 154 square feet, was that included for the purposes of calculating square footage of the building? Or would it have to? And I, that's really Ms. Favati's question.
If it's livable space, then I believe it would, it needs to be included in the calculation of the floor area. That 154 square feet.
So, so, so the question is, in terms of, your sheet had certain calculations with regard to the square footage of the building itself. Does that include, for that particular house, I know it's two different houses, for that particular house, was that 154 square feet included with that?
It would not, it would have to be amended and added to my calculation.
At my question.
This plan was created after my plan.
Right.
Because that's your architectural plan of the lot in, to address.
Ms. Minneke, the microphone. I know you, I know you only got two hands.
Okay.
So, okay, so, and just so we're clear and the board's clear, this PB05 is representative of which of the proposed homes?
Yes.
No, no, not yes, which?
01 or 02.
The original one, 8.01. I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Okay, no worries. This representation of PB05, okay? That is in reference to the home. Wait, 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 I want to state it the right way.
This home.
Okay, 8.02.
8.01.
8.01.
8.01, that reflects the house on lot 8.01.
Okay.
Okay?
And Joe, what did you mark it as?
A5.
A5. Attic eight, for lot 8.01.
Correct.
Steve, you agree with that?
Now, for a lot, I don't want to jump ahead.
Yeah, well, it's just.
Just so, because I'm getting confused. Walk me through what you've identified on the architectural plan. Do you have sheet PB01? PB01, right?
PB01 was the front elevation view.
Correct, and the one that doesn't have, that has the front, what did you mark that as?
A4 is both, we marked as both.
Okay, so you had A4 as both. And now, the attic plans perhaps will pull both A5?
Well, because they're different, let's call them A5 for the attic representation of 8.01. And I think then we're going to use some more of that blue ink and make it A6 for the attic on 8.02?
Yes. Yes, 8.02.
You never know with our tax assessment.
Now, I do have a reduced sized version of that, so Mr. Bott will hand it up so you can see it for yourself.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Ms. Minneke, just give us one second while Mr. Bott hands that up. All right, Mr. Bott, you can't, you can't testify. Okay. So now, Ms. Minneke, if you can flip over.
Now, we're going to go to.
And this one.
The attic area for.
We'll mark this one as A6 for the attic at lot 8.02.
And this area shows 278 square foot of habitable attic area.
Okay.
278. And that would also have to be then added to my site plan towards the floor area.
Now, I would make just one observation and perhaps the board planner could correct me. The ordinance has a requirement for a minimum floor area, but there's no like FAR maximum.
That's correct.
Correct.
But while it has to go on the plan, it's not as though it's.
And it doesn't affect the footprint of the building, but for accuracy's sake.
Right, correct.
An amended plan would be required. Okay.
Okay. Does that conclude your testimony?
That's it, I hope.
Okay. With that said, does the board have any, or, I'm sorry, let me start with Mr. Cagiano. Mr. Cagiano, do you have any questions for the engineering witness?
Well, going back to the site plan, getting away from the house. And I was going to ask a question on the house, but I don't think you know the answer, or maybe you do. How do you access that attic? Is that through a pull downstairs, do you know?
I believe it's walk upstairs, the walk up ad, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are you going to provide a survey and the existing condition plan and show the house on that?
I could do that.
Okay, but in the, in the plan set?
I will include it on the plan set, I also plotted one for tonight if you want to see it.
Okay, I did want to have a, just so the board can see where the existing house is, just to be clear.
Sure, hang on one second.
I know you were pointing to it, but it wasn't shown on the plan we were looking at. And then what, if any, trees are going to remain? I know there's that large 60 inch tree that's coming down in the middle of the site. But what trees, if any, are going to remain?
All right, there's going to be another egg, so what's this, what's the next one?
Seven.
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 Ms. Minneke, what do you want to refer to this as?
It's the minor subdivision zoning compliance plan, it's sheet two of six with the existing house footprint depicted on it. And I don't know how easy it is, you can see in purple, this is the existing footprint of the house right here. You can see it starts generally right here and comes across to here, just past the subdivision line.
What color is that?
Excuse me?
What color, you said it was purple?
It's like a purple color, it's not shown on your plan.
No, we don't have it on.
No, this is, I just, I saw in the planner's memo that there was a question as to where the existing house plot.
That drawing is updated from the set that we have.
Yeah, just for an exhibit for tonight's meeting, but.
And then trees, what trees are going to remain?
We're going to be, we're going to be removing the two here, the 36 and the 60 here. Because as you can see, they're right up against the back of the house. All the other trees are going to remain, like especially along the, that the westerly boundary. And I believe there's some also along the easterly boundary, so they're all going to remain. So basically, the only significant vegetation that can be removed are those two trees.
Now, Mr. Minneke, just so everybody can see it, it's possible for you to somehow either highlight or hash mark the footprint of the existing house on exhibit A7.
A little bit more clear, you mean?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, yeah, but the shading thing.
Does someone here have the attic shading thing?
Didn't help much, but I appreciate the effort. Would it be appropriate to hand that up to the board?
I think, I think Mr. Minneke is doing a better job.
Yeah.
To life.
There you go.
And then I also, on the dry well, you saw our comment letter, a couple of changes on that. The traffic rated, castings and lids on that, case pieces of equipment on the yard. Also, we recommend that, I know you had said overflow, but there's a storm pipe right in the road. So we would defer to the township engineer, but it would be our recommendation to connect those to the storm pipe right in the frontage of the property.
Sure, if we can do it.
Yeah, the lag or the storm pipe.
Well, if I can make it by gravity, yeah, yes.
That would be our recommendation. You commented on the walls, that's all I have. And just for the board's knowledge, this subdivision shouldn't be approved. This then has to go for plot plan review by the township engineer before it can get any kind of building permits. any kind of building permits. They get a second bite of the apple and reviewing. There's a lot creating details, and actually, in more detail than this board.
Okay.
Sure, we have a question here.
Just one sec, we'll let...
That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Favate?
Yeah, um, on the issue of whether it's a third story or not, I'm a little bit flummoxed because, uh, you know, I understand your, the drawing that you shared tonight that shows that it's a very small area that's, you know, greater than seven feet, um, but then the township's definition of a partial story is four feet. So, I'm just, I'm not clear how this meets, how this is, how this doesn't constitute another story.
I'm going to be honest with you, um...
Well, how about we agree to this? Whatever the township's ordinance requires will comply.
I understand, and you said that, but without the architect here to explain what that would actually mean for the building, it's hard to know what remedy would be.
Because the effect of that would could be, and I'm just, I'm no planner, but I think what the issue is that, that... The ordinance is two and a half stories, correct, Ms. Favate? So, if you had a third story, despite the building height, there would be a need for variance. And the fact that there exists that, that area of seven feet in that third-floor attic walk-up, that's, I think, of concern, because to me, based upon my legal review of this matter, you know, once you, once you get that seven feet, you've got, you've got a third floor. So, that, that, that would have to be, um, that would, that would have to be addressed in...
Either through relief or through...
And it's not a compliance issue, it's, it's a variance issue, which is a different, which is a different story. You can't talk without talking to your attorney first, he knows what he's doing, he's got to tie up.
Yeah. Well, we don't want a stories variance under any circumstance, how'd that sound?
That's always a good answer, to avoid variances. Yeah, I, I mean, to, to, to the board's review, I talked to Ms. Favate for a few seconds before the board meeting, uh, because in my reading of the ordinance and in reviewing this and hearing Mr. Menneke's testimony, which I think is, is very helpful and clarifying, that that section, although smaller than the other floors below it, would constitute for that particular area a third level, um, and potentially usable and habitable, rather than as a, a half-story as required by the ordinance. So, that would have to be, in order to avoid a variance, that would have to be eliminated, in order to be compliant with the ordinance. That, that would be...
I'm not prepared.
I'm not asking you to answer that?
Yeah, I'm not prepared. He has to fire on that.
You know, that, 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 I think is, is, is the rubber meeting the road, I'm sorry, Mr. Dinsmore.
Okay, um, having that said, I'll, I keep looking things up, but we'll have additional questions to ask, so I'll open it up to the board at this time.
I'm sorry, I have one more.
Oh, okay.
If Mr. Dinsmore's more than mine. This is not as a more, not as a significant question, it's not a threshold issue, is that landscaping. I think we'd also ask for some landscaping between the homes and potentially some street trees if, if the stormwater allows.
The stormwater would allow...
In terms of where the dry well is.
Is there a requirement like this, to where, can these trees be planted in the right-of-way or do they have to be out of the right-of-way?
You'd need to coordinate with the forester, but...
Because if we can put them in the right-of-way, because there is a bit of distance between the edge of the curb and the property line, so we could put a tree in front of each dry well, a street tree.
If you're coordinating with the forester, in any case, he'll, he'll let you know what you can do and where.
The board doesn't have, I just had this discussion with another board, the board has no jurisdiction to allow you to invade a right-of-way, because it's not, we don't have the authority to grant that from the township, but we can certainly say, should the board wish, uh, that the applicant would, uh, have further conversations with the forester about landscaping in the front yard...
Right.
To the degree that it wouldn't, uh, cause problems with the stormwater.
I believe that the board planner also brought up the fact that they're going to put a tree or two in the backyard to compensate for the two trees we're taking down.
Right, which, which we believe probably shades the adjacent properties as well.
They could, yeah, they could.
Now, I have the definition of half a story... In your ordinance. So, I'll read it, and then maybe we can figure out what it means. Half a story. A partial story under a gable, hip, or gambrel roof, the wall plates of which, on at least two opposite exterior walls, are not more than four feet above the floor of such story.
Right, it's difficult to know without the attic floor plan, to think exactly how high the walls go around the periphery of that four.
Oh, so the rafters are coming down to the plate?
Yes.
So, all right, so, I think Mr. Dinsmore is, is dying to speak, Chairman, perhaps because of his years of experience. I'm not making him old, I'm just making him experienced.
Well, the question I have for, for our professionals and for the counselor is basically one of, why are you presenting us with so many details? I'd rather just say, here's, here's an area you can build this to, here are the requirements, and have at it within the box we've just given you.
Understood, and you know, that's really all that's necessary, and many times you never see architectural plans on a minor subdivision. It's just, we felt that it would be of some comfort to the board if you saw what was proposed.
You know, what I want, the way I approach this, as I've always approached this, is to go after it from the legal requirements, what is the building envelope? You're, you're asking for one variance that actually affects how I look at this. The architectural detail I find is wonderful, it's very nice, but we could spend all night arguing over the details of whether there should be a porch, or whether it should be different colored, or whether the attic is the wrong size. What I'm doing is I'm counting on our zoning officer to come in and say, you've made the attic too big, you have to cut it down.
Understood. You're absolutely correct, and perhaps we have thrown too many facts into the, into the pot that are not necessary, but we figured that it would be helpful to show the board and the neighbors what was proposed, so that somehow it would be of some solace.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
One second, Mr. Fajery, Ms. Hernandez has another question?
Oh, yeah, I had a question about the dry well, who maintains it, the dry wells?
It would be the individual property owner.
And how is that policed?
It could be done, and I don't know if precipitately requires this, a lot of towns are requiring operations and maintenance manuals that are filed in the county clerk's office for continued maintenance, and then every, every time there's a change in title, it comes up in the title, the title search, so that everybody's aware that there is a dry well and it must be maintained.
So this will go, this goes in front of the engineers, Mr. Cagiano says?
Yeah, usually the township engineer or the board engineer approves the operations and maintenance manual, and then it just gets, it gets filed with the county, once it gets approved by the town engineer.
All right. Mr. Fajery?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going back to what, you know, the, some of the, we appreciate, I, at least I appreciated the detail, to, we, we see these subdivisions and we're obviously limited by the rules of the road and, uh, trying to make everything work. I heard a number of 153 square feet, just, I know Mr. Wenzel moved beyond the numbers, but just to sort of take it from the abstract to the practical, I believe, Ms. Menneke, you did say one of the two structures, that attic area with the seven-foot clearance, was going to be 153 square feet? Just to make the point, I...
Yeah, 154, yes.
154. So, um, you, you, there's people here who do math quicker than I do, but it was, it was figured out, and I'm lucky to sit next to such a whiz, and, uh, that, that's essentially a bedroom with a direct staircase to it. So just to reiterate, the, what, what, you know, has, has been highlighted, I understand the ordinance kind of rolls right past that detail, but just to make it clear what you would have to comply with, you know, that's essentially a bedroom. My son's bedroom is smaller than that.
Right.
You know? So, okay, just so everyone, I don't know if other people are fortunate enough to have a math whiz next to them, but I was, and I just wanted to put that in for the record.
All right.
Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Following up on that, that it is the size of a bedroom, and I'll ask this of the professionals, what does it take for that new homeowner to go in and convert that quote into a bedroom?
They can.
Yeah.
They, they can convert, they can use it as a, as a habitable space, yes.
So it is a third floor.
And my, my point, no, my point is that it becomes unbuildable as a, as a bedroom. My point is that it wouldn't be a seven-foot ceiling over 150 square feet if it follows what we permit.
Okay, we can, we can put that into the condition of...
I think what, I think what Mr. Dinsmore, I think what Mr. Dinsmore is, is stating, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but basically that, uh, the, the board wouldn't be getting into the nitty-gritty of 154, 278, whatever size of the attic, just simply say the home is to be limited to no more than two and a half stories as permitted by the ordinance, and then if need be, there, you know, needs to be a little sharpening of pencils, then there needs to be a sharpening of pencils before they go before, uh, make their final, uh, building permits before, um, Ms. Veely, because that would obviate a variance.
Yeah, basically what it's saying is that these architectural plans wouldn't be what would be actually submitted in the end, because it would not meet the two and a half story requirement.
Right.
Period, end of story.
Now, Mr. Bott would like to address a couple of the comments that come up, so he has my blessing, just so you have a complete understanding of your questions, right?
Yeah, I just want to be sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Bott.
Could you, yeah, speak to the mic?
So, I have built this house before, we put the heating system up there for the second floor, and my personal preference is to have stairs up there to make it easier to maintain, and I've never had anyone finish it, but it could be finished, because according to your ordinance, they're talking about at the wall, a four-foot-high wall, there is no wall on the outside walls at all, the rafters rest on the plate on, on the second floor, so it's barely a two and a half story, it's not a three-story, there's no way, um, that that would be defined as a three-story house. The rafters come down right on the, on the second floor.
And you're intending on installing the heating system up there?
Yes, we put the second-floor heating system up there and the first-floor heating system in the attic, I mean, in the basement, and that just makes it...
You're talking about the, just so we're clear, the mechanicals?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, yeah, and usually, we put plywood down, but it's for storage, it's really nice to have an extra storage area.
I mean, I think as Mr. Wenzel, and Dinsmore and others, I've spied, ultimately it's the zoning officer's decision on, on compliance.
Right, because there is no variance requested, so therefore, the applicant would have to comply with the strictures of the, of the ordinance regardless of the questions, I would say, that the architectural plans bring up.
And Mr. Bott, just so everybody has an understanding as to why you submitted this, is it fair to say that what you see here in these plans is what you're intending on building, it's not going to be any bigger, so you're not showing the board this and going to build something bigger?
No, that's the plan that I planned to put on the plaque.
So if the board imposes a condition on this application or this, an approval, should they approve it, that you have to build these two houses, you agreeable tonight?
Yes.
And you'll comply with the ordinance, so if the ordinance says you got to cut it back, you're going to cut it back, comply with the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board of the engineering witness?
Yeah, actually, I have one more follow-up. It's on the existing fence along the Eastery property line with, with lot nine, there's an encroachment. I guess lot nine, the adjoining properties, has their fence over on lot 8.2, hasn't been any discussions, it's not really the purview of this board, but I want to make sure that there's no surprises and there's no issues. Are you going to keep the fence there and, and have some kind of notation in your, some kind of agreement?
There's a fence along here that, it's an encroachment from lot nine onto your property, it's a fence here, chain-link fence. Is it your intention to allow them to leave it there, or...
I, I don't have a problem with it, but if it came up for the homeowner that was to purchase it, I think they would have the right to ask them to move it, wouldn't they?
Well, you probably should have that discussion with them, but I just wanted to see what, what you guys had thought about with that. Just a comment.
No, it, it, no, it connects back to the house.
Oh, it does?
It connects back to the house, the next door neighbor's house.
Uh, you know, I'm not making any requirements to do anything with it, but it should be acknowledged, especially for the new homeowner and coming in today, or some kind of acknowledgement with the existing, with the adjoining property.
Did you show up on the survey?
Yeah, it was on the, yeah.
Survey of the property.
Take a one-foot encroachment, something like that.
That's all I had.
Okay, I did ask Mr. Bott about the question raised by the board planner relative to the additional landscaping, the bushes between the two new houses, as well as two shade trees, and Mr. Bott, can you tell the board what your decision is on this?
Yes, we can do that.
It's better coming from you than coming from me.
Mr. Napolitano, a question for the engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going back, a while back. You mentioned something about you're removing soil, but you're not changing the grading?
No, we're, we're lowering the upper lot, the lot 8.01.
Lowering the upper lot?
Yeah, to bring the grade down, in order to be a compliant driveway, a more compliant driveway.
All right. Okay, so then that was my next question, and so can you elaborate for, you know, the people in the area, especially going downhill, how they're not going to see more water in their basements?
Uh, well, that, that's the purpose of the, of the dry well.
And you're, and that's, it's been before, these dry wells are going to work and the neighbors have nothing to worry about whatsoever?
No, they have emergency overflow grates, of which the grading, the way it is, shows to have the water going out to Iroquois Avenue, and it's stormwater.
I know we had, thank you, I know we had a rough year of rain back in September and October, many homes were damaged, and the home never saw water before, I mean, but those withstand, you know, six, seven inches of rain.
Yeah, they would surcharge in that event, and it would go out to Iroquois Avenue.
And I guess they'll never would have water today, so, okay.
Well, actually, it's not going to go to Iroquois Avenue based upon what was discussed, it's going right to the storm, so...
Yeah, yeah, if I can get an emergency overflow into the storm drain, yes. Yes.
Okay, um, and then, I'm sorry, Mr. Wenzel, could you help me out with something? They're subdividing a 12,000-square-foot lot, the two lots. In previous case, I know all cases are individual, but wasn't there a requirement of the over 40,000 square feet to subdivide a lot?
Different.
No.
Different zoning area.
Different zoning areas.
Different zoning area.
This particular zoning area, 12,000, is allowed.
This particular zoning, 6,000 is allowed.
No, but to subdivide, you had to be at least 12.
To get to 6, yes.
Correct.
Yes.
There's not actually a, a rule about what, what size the property has to be in order to subdivide it, it just depends on what the two resulting properties are.
And 6,000 is required, all right. Okay, thank you.
And the distance between the two houses, 20 feet, complies?
Yes.
Yes. The envelope that the building is on. All right, Mr. Dadij?
I'm going to have first question for our professionals. So I see those two houses, 8.01 and 01, they're pretty close, so is there a requirement or ordinance around, you know, how much would be the space between those two? Any fencing, the height of fencing, the bushes, or trees, or whatever, that kind of thing?
The only requirement is the required yard, which they, they comply with. The only requirement is the required yard, which they comply with, six feet.
Yep.
So, they could actually be closer, and there is no requirement on how high the fence and/or landscaping has to be, it's only the maximum height of the fence. I don't believe you're proposing any fences.
We're not proposing any fences.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just, the only variances they're asking for are on Lot 15.
Okay. Okay, last chance for questions from the board, anything?
Actually, one.
Mr. Dinsmore.
One last follow-up, and that is, have you had a chance to figure out just what the actual height of the building is to its actual?
I'll do that when I sit down. I don't want to go off, I don't want to go off the cuff on that, and I want to make sure I give you the right number.
Okay.
Okay, because I'm not a fan of the way that we've written our rules with regard to that, because we're not talking about the actual peak of the house, we're talking about some average of peaks, and I think that's way too easily gained.
I agree. All right. All right, anything else from my left? Anything from my right? Okay, all right. We've completed our questions of the engineering witness, I'll open it up to public at this point. This would be for questions of the engineer, so based on anything you've heard in testimony at this point. Yeah.
Okay, we need to get him a mic.
Okay.
Can you hand it over?
Yes.
You need to state, spell your name for the record and the address.
My name is Nick Amasekeo, last name is A-E-M-I-S-E-G-E-O, and I live at 31 Iroquois. So I guess what I'm trying to be clear on, I guess it's most of the width is basically what I'm thinking, that you need 60 by 100 to build a home in this R9, is it?
Or 4.
R4, so you need 60 by 100. He's working with a lot that's 100 by 100, so what he's looking for?
100 by 120.
100 by 120, so the 120 he has, he's short 20 feet with the width. So he would be asking for 10 feet on each property? Is my right for saying that?
That is the variance he's asking for, yes.
Okay. I guess my question next to my property, which would be the house on the right-hand side, how far would he be off the property line of my property?
13 feet.
13 feet off that side of the property?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And your house is?
Is to the right of it.
Right, I just want to be off your house.
Right.
And your house is approximately five feet off the property line.
Mine's five feet off the property line. And on the other side of the property, where that fence is, by the other driveway? The fence that we spoke about, yeah, by the driveway? How far would you be off there once you put the new driveway up?
Uh, 10, 10 feet.
So that's 23 feet, so you're down to 50 east, I guess, 50 east, or, you have six feet off my property line, or five feet off my property line.
13 feet off your property line, and you're 60 or 50.
So the outside of the building that you're building will be 13 feet away from my property line, and then down on the lower side, how far was that?
10.
10 feet, so that's 23 feet, and you need 60 feet in order to build a home, right?
60, just so we're using the right numbers, just so we're all on the same page here. The zoning requirement requires a lot frontage, meaning the, from one side of the lot to the other side of the lot, in this zone requires 60 feet.
So that's the width.
That's the width of that lot.
Okay.
What Mr. Maneki was stating, and just want to be clear for the record, because he stated a few numbers, just so that we're all on the same page.
Right.
Mr. Maneki was advising as to the distance from the house to the lot line versus the distance from the one house to the other house. I think the gentleman was asking not only to the lot line, but the distance between the actual buildings.
That's what I'm asking, yes.
Between the two proposed buildings?
Right, between the proposed building and the gentleman's building on the right, that's what the distance he's looking for.
18.
18 feet.
5 and 13. 18 feet.
So that would be the distance, what Mr. Maneki is saying, sir, is that that's the distance between the proposed building, and your current building would be 18 feet. That's what that shows.
And the other one, he said, was, what was that other number down below?
10, and the distance between the two buildings would be at its closest point. 17, 16?
Right, so to me, I mean.
16 feet on the other side, between the homes.
Between the homes.
Whether the requirement, the side yard step backs require in your zone, 60.
Right.
And 12 feet combined, which they meet.
So if you have 13 feet away from them, you have 10 feet away, and we're 20 feet shy, how are they going to, how wide are these houses going to be that he's building? 30 feet, 20 feet wide, I mean, you.
No, they're around, can't leave, just under 30. Yeah, 10 and 16.
So if it's 30, he's got two buildings that are 60, and you're almost 30 feet apart from each other, I mean, I think that's a lot of property to ask for. And then concerned with the arbivites, you know, you say they grow a lot, you know, they grow a foot a year, and to me, I mean, that's, if you put bushes, you're going to definitely have to put something different, because that's deer food. We have a lot of deer in our neighborhood, and the deer are just going to eat them bushes. That's not even, that's not even a concern of mine with the bushes, it's just being so close to my property, we bought this property just, but last November, knowing that we didn't have neighbors right on top of us, that's what kind of attracted us to buy this house, now we're, you know, we're looking to get two little McMansions put next to our house, which.
Well, we got to.
Yeah, we, yeah. All right, you're going to say the same thing.
And in that neighborhood, I mean, they're all little houses in the neighborhood, there's a couple ones with additions on it.
So we need to just leave it to questions. Questions, we'll take your.
Comments.
Comments, thank you, Chairman.
Right, right.
Okay, so do you have any other questions for the engineer?
So I guess, I guess, you know, I don't think it's right, I mean, if you need, if you need 60 feet, I guess my question is, how much width do you need to build two houses in that neighborhood? 120? He has 100?
The ordinance requires 120, that's why he's seeking a variance.
Right, okay.
And so that's what we're deciding on the approval for today. Now, with that said, any questions for the testimony of the engineer is appropriate at this time? If you have any comments, we'll make sure we have time for you at the end.
Okay, I'll wait till the end then.
Okay.
I guess my main concern was just how, what was the width, that's all.
Okay, I understand.
It's kind of self-explanatory.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the public? All right, we'll close the public portion for the engineering witness. Please continue your testimony.
Now, I would say Mr. Bott has given testimony subsequent to his initial testimony, so he's here to answer any questions that the public may have, so you'll be hanging with us. All right, our next witness is Alex Doherty, who's a licensed professional planner, he's going to join us this evening, I'm going to ask him, he'll take Mr. Maneki's mic on the end.
In that zone? Yes. Okay, Mr. Doherty, you're going to take the mic, or are you going to sit, whatever you want to do, it's up to you, Alex. Okay, do you swear, do you swear front tell truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, and even though we've said your name 400 times already, why don't you state and spell your name for the record for us?
Alexander Doherty, spelled D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y.
Okay. Mr. Doherty, you could take a seat if you want, and counsel, why don't you put Mr. Doherty's qualifications on briefly?
Very good. Mr. Doherty, if you would please provide for the board the benefit of your education and your professional licenses and your experience as a planner.
Professional education, Rutgers, Masters in City and Regional Planning, Concentration in Development and Redevelopment, Certification of Public Policy, Licensed PP and AICP Certified, I've testified on over 40 boards this year.
You've been busy.
Yeah.
I asked that the board accept Mr. Doherty's credentials and permit of the test files and license of professional planning.
Does the board have any questions about the qualifications of the witness? All right, seeing none, we'll permit the witness as an expert, please continue.
Very good. Mr. Doherty, you've been handed the assignment of providing testimony and evidence to this board in support of the application, specifically with regard to two lot width variances in conjunction with this minor subdivision, so I'm going to ask you what documentation you reviewed, whether you have any information you can share with the board, whether you have any exhibits, and then if you can proceed.
So I reviewed the ordinance, master plan, the planning engineer memo, I've prepared some exhibits for the board, there are more of just maps and aerials of the site, and the four pages, they weren't provided prior, I have them with me now.
So is it fair to say you brought with you some aerial photographs and some pictures of the subject property surrounding neighborhood, is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
And these exhibits were prepared in conjunction with this application at your direction or under your review and approval, is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
At the best of your knowledge, your photographs fairly and accurately reflect the conditions of this neighborhood, the zoning layout, and likewise, the pattern of development in the existing neighborhood?
Absolutely, that's my thought.
Okay, very good. How many copies do you have?
Copies, I believe 15.
Nice.
Wow. That's why you brought the big beefcase.
Planners always come prepared.
Make a, enough with the planners. We'll mark these as A8.
A8, and we'll call it the planning exhibit, how's that?
Sounds good.
Planning exhibit. How many pages is A8?
Four pages.
Okay, A8 is four pages, and then after we hand those out to the boards, we're going to, we'll put them on this, walk through them and tell us what we say.
Most important one to get to is the one at the end.
Actually, you got one for lady at the end of the table.
Thank you.
And for the benefit of the neighbors, I'm going to hand them a copy of A8, so that they can follow us.
Oh, okay, I was going to have Mr. Doherty leave a copy for them.
Okay, so why don't you walk us through A8, page by page, please?
Absolutely. So, on the first page, I think this is one of the most compelling exhibits here, this is essentially a parcel map of the immediate area, you'll see there's some color variations. Yellow indicates lots within the immediate neighborhood that are well underneath the 60-foot width requirement. Again, as you've heard, that's exactly what we're here for, lot width. So with that being said, the big, bold outline in black, that's the property in question. You see the checker line going right up the middle with this proposed tonight for two lots of 50 feet in width. As you can see, I'm trying to blow this up, so you can see substantially, most of the lots here in question are 40, that are in yellow, are 40 feet wide. So what we're asking for, seeking from you guys tonight is a lot that we believe is very much compatible with the harmony of this neighborhood. The only other lot that is substantially within proportion of the lot as it currently exists now, is going to be Lot 3, and as you can see, when you really look at Lot 3, which is going to be kind of off to the left, and a faint outline shows the building footprint of that building, which in my opinion, is not really compatible with the neighborhood at all. So if given the permission to subdivide this lot, we believe this lot and the buildings being proposed at the scale they are, are much more compatible than building a larger home on this 100-foot lot. And as you can see, not just our immediate lot, but also across the street in yellow, all those houses are 40 feet wide. So again, looking, if you're on Iroquois, looking across the street here, what you're seeing are substantially smaller lots, smaller homes, again, that's the narrative of this neighborhood. There is a healthy mix and a healthy balance. We're not here tonight asking for 40-foot width, we're here for 50, just inside what the zone requires. What I think is important to note, though, is we need the overall lot area. We're not asking for any other variances, once we patch out the building story definition, only thing we're here for is the lot width. The lot area complies, and I think that's very important to note here, you see a lot of times, a subdivision where we don't comply with anything. We're here before you comply with pretty much everything else, side yards, step backs, curbs coverage, building heights, building, everything. So this is a very important, I believe, narrative to kind of come back to, is that page one. Can we go to page two?
Now, Alex, I got to ask you a question. Before you leave page one.
Absolutely.
It appears that every one of the lots that you highlighted in yellow, that are substandard in lot width, they don't have 60 feet, they're also, they don't meet the lot area either, because they're either 40 by 100 or 40 by 120, so that's about 4,800 square feet.
Correct.
So, is it fair to say then, that every one of these lots that you highlighted in yellow, yellow apart from the two that we're proposing, are not only insufficient in lot width, but they're also insufficient in lot area by like 1,000 square feet?
Correct.
All right, so we comply with lot area, now could you tell us, before you leave this, are there any other lots in this immediate, on our street, on Iroquois, that had the potential for subdivision apart from ours?
Potentially, this Lot 3, if you wanted to, go in front of the board like we're doing tonight, but again, it would request a variance.
Okay, so apart from our lot and Lot Number 3, those are the only two lots on this block on Iroquois that you say have the potential for subdivision?
Yeah.
All right, I interrupted you, go to page two.
Page two is what you see out there today, these photos are of a grown, gave you a little bit more of a bird's eye. Now, given what I tried to explain on page one with the 40-foot lot widths that are kind of scattered throughout this neighborhood, what you see here to the right of this is basically an empty void, and we're trying to fill that void with a brand-new home by also providing for another brand-new home. And as you can kind of see out here, off in the distance, and the next two pages will reflect that, which is just a general neighborhood, there is kind of a healthy balance of, you know, single-family, two-story, you know, one-story buildings here, so what we're here tonight, I don't believe is any, is out of character of what's actually within this neighborhood. And the next three, the next couple pages kind of just reflect that, it's a little bit further out, the ground's a little higher, as you can see, we have some newer style homes kind of popping up throughout the area, a little higher, in compatibility with the neighbors, some are low-line homes, they're older homes, some across the street are, you know, healthy two-and-a-half stories, you know, it's a mix, a healthy mix. And page four is basically kind of bringing home that empty void from the public realm, that side lot question, that side yard, essentially from the public realm is an empty lot. So, I mean, that's the exhibits that I brought for you to kind of help, you know, give the board a little bit more understanding of what exactly we're doing. And with that said, just kind of jumping into more of the planning testimony, as we've heard, this is a, this is one tax lot, we're on Block 516, Lot 8, again, this is oversized, 12,000 square feet, it's developed with a one-family dwelling, it's built early 1900s, 1940, so substantially old. Again, we have that clear, open side yard, which is about, you know, I'd say over 50 feet at this point, the way the building's set off, we're right around there. The area surroundings consist of detached dwellings with a strong pattern of lots that are 50 feet or less, as page one demonstrates. The plan, again, a minor subdivision to create two lots, split right down the middle, each lot would have 50-foot frontages. That's the only variance we're here for, is the 50-foot lot width. We comply with everything else, lot coverage, we comply with the front yard, 28 feet, we're giving you 28.5. The side yards, we are giving the one, as we just discussed, where I got up here, 13 feet, the other is getting 10.2 feet, where all it's required is 6. So essentially, if subdivision weren't to happen, I know side yard is space, you pay to build this, houses closer to this, these houses we're proposing are proportional to the lots we're requesting to be subdivided. With that said, both the side yards, the zoning orders requires going to be 12 feet, both our side yards for these lots would be 20.5, substantially more than what the zone requires. When we look at the rear yard, we need 20 feet, we're giving a rear yard of 49.7 feet for each lot, so we have the depth, which is why essentially we have the lot area. When we go with the building coverage at 20%, even though our lots are deficient in size, we're giving you a building coverage of 19.6 on each lot. So, we're not being greedy or asking for a smaller lots, we're bigger homes, these are proportional to what the zone requires. When we look at the impervious coverage, we're 40% allowed, we're giving you 32.4 on the one lot, 32.5 on the other. Again, well within the means of the zoning ordinance. When we look at the zone itself, again, we are in the R4 residential. When we look at the zone itself, again, we are in the R4 residential district. As far as the zone conformance, as I just went through, we comply with everything else, including, again, as I said, the lot area, which is the six thousand square feet. So again, the zone relief is the fifty versus the sixty for the width. When we look at the certifications for relief, we have some legal basis, if you will. This is the textbook Kaufman case, which is the essence of the C2. This lot, essentially the subdivision, that's exactly what the Kaufman case was, the subdivision, deficiency on width, as well as area here, we're just on width. When we look at what the court ruled, it basically determined that two smaller dwellings are better zoning alternative than one large dwelling. Again, as we heard, there is no FAR for this zone, as long as we stay within the building coverage, this can be a substantially larger home. We have the room, and I just think that's more compatible with what the zone is requiring. It was out there, it was manifested. And what we present to you tonight, we believe is a better alternative than one larger home on this lot. When we look at another case, Debrina Meadows versus McPhil Planning Board, the appellate division, similar application here, they actually overturned the denial of a subdivision, again, upholding the Kaufman case. So very similar facts the neighborhood having for you tonight. With that being said, on a balancing test, the benefits of this application outweigh any of the detriment. As we heard from the engineer, we have better drainage, we're adding trees, we have side yards. So again, with that being said, the benefits, we are improving the neighborhood harmony. Also, Section 62 of the Land use law says that zoning should revolve around the neighborhood pattern, and I think that's what we're doing here, even though we're deficient in the lot width. The project will deliver new housing stock that is in keeping with the character of the area. With that said, aestheticity of the project will promote, and fill that void as I try to drive in on page two. And all that essentially promotes the municipal land use law, especially Purpose A, C, E, G, I, and M. To go over those briefly, Purpose A is to guide appropriate development in a manner within the state, which promotes the public health, safety, moral, and general welfare. Purpose C is provide adequate light, air, and open space. I say we need that because we're not encroaching on side yards and impervious coverage and so forth, and building height. We have ample side yard, ample front yard, ample rear yard. So with that said, I believe we hit Purpose C here. And we go to Purpose E is to promote, establish appropriate populations with entities for the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and the regions, and to preserve the environment. We're not looking to essentially deforce an area to build a new lot, there's an open void here, and the pattern fits, and it's an appropriate density for the slot, for this neighborhood. When we go with Purpose G, Purpose G is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations provided uses, including residential, with the means of to meet all New Jersey citizens. Now, when we meet Purpose I is to promote desirable visual environment. These houses are aesthetically pleasing, they're new, and they're not obtrusive. When we look at Purpose N, it's essentially to encourage coordination of various public and private entities with the idea of lessening the costs of such development. When we look at the detriments that could be here, relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the area of the zone plan. Visually, the dwellings will be on scale with the housing type within the area. Functionally, the dwellings will be designed to be safe, efficient, comfortable, and built to building code. Again, the house is there now, it's from the nineteen forties. If you have, again, adequate light air, notwithstanding relief, that's on the similar build out of the lots, and the building will comply with all the zoning requirements, again, to hash out with the story here, and then again, with zoning setbacks and coverage. There is a strong case law that is essentially right on point for this application for you tonight. The application satisfies statutory criteria for relief and approvals warranted.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Ms. Vate, any questions of the planner?
None for me, Mr. Chen.
Okay. Mr. Cagiano?
No, no questions.
All right. And any questions from members of the board? Mr. Didsmore?
I'm looking at, I've always had problems with subdivisions, especially when it leaves a slightly smaller...
Yeah.
...front yard, well, not front yard, but, you know, the frontage. But I've also always looked at it as a matter of perspective, that if some sort of management of the perspective remains the same, that if the house is slightly... I mean, this is basically a thirty-by-forty rounding home, which is not out of character with the neighborhood...
No.
...at all. There are two thirty-by-forty-foot homes, it's twelve hundred square feet roughly, for the foundation and for the home itself. I'm just trying to say that when it comes to subdivisions, the things that I'm looking at are the view from the front, does it seem out of character? And that gets to the side yard setbacks, are they slightly bigger so that with the smaller foot, with the smaller frontage, you've got to make sure that it doesn't, that doesn't cause the house to look that much bigger, and also height. And I'm just trying to get your perspective from a planning point of view, is that the proper way to measure height here? Because the, you know, what we say in our law is one thing, but again, perspective of the viewer from the street is going to go right to the peak of the roof.
Right, so you're asking, how do I measure height?
How do you view height? Because we grapple with the concept of a house looking like it's going to be too big for a neighborhood. And that's really what I'm trying to get at here. You've got slightly narrower lots, you've got a house that fortunately, the presentation here shows that it's considerably further back from the property lines than it needs to be by law. But the height, we're getting architectural renderings that look like the height is a little bit more than was stated, because the statement comes from the legal definition of the building height.
Right.
And I'm just looking from a planning point of view in terms of trying to match the neighborhood.
See, I'm indifferent about height.
Okay.
In surveying for a while, I know height could be not the illusion. I can certainly tell you from a planning standpoint, nobody wants the, you know, skyscraper, you know, at their, you know, and there are some low-line houses in the neighborhood, there are some newer, higher ones. I do know that the zone requires what the thirty-five foot is the max for height, and we're well under that. I don't believe this is going to be an overpowering structure for the two of them, especially with the adequate space between them, it won't look too dominating. But to measure the height, I mean...
It's, I'm talking subjectively here, not objectively, from a planning point of view. And you've given that, so you just said you don't think it'll be overpowering.
No.
That's really what I was trying to draw up. Okay, that's, you know...
Are you, are you okay, Mr.? Okay.
I'm sorry, I took you down the road.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay. Any other questions?
A suggestion for you, if you don't mind.
Okay, Mr. McCall.
Do you have a program that could actually superimpose the two new homes into this, into the drone fixtures? That would be really helpful, by the way. That would help a lot.
I would, that would require me to actually get the digitized version.
Yeah. I thought it'd be helpful, just down the road maybe. Yeah, just for future reference. Thank you. Great presentation, by the way.
Councilman D'Pierre?
Yeah. First of all, compliments on the drone photography. Fantastic. I'm always tempted to play with one when I get my hands on one.
We'll get him one for Christmas.
Can we chip in for that?
My, in Lake Hiawatha, most densely populated area of Parsippany, normally, I object to taking a conforming lot and producing two non-conforming lots, in general philosophy. Now, when you point to all these forty-foot-wide lot widths, they were created before the township had a master plan. They're all grandfathered. So looking at those and saying it's consistent with the neighborhood, I don't buy that. Now, if indeed this subdivision request produced non-conforming width and non-conforming area, I would vote no. That's adding to the density of the neighborhood, which I object to strongly. The reason we have a sixty-foot width was to prevent Lake Hiawatha from becoming more densely populated. That's the whole purpose of the zone that we created back in nineteen seventy-seven. But you do have, a conforming lot is sixty by a hundred, six thousand square feet. You have fifty by a hundred and twenty, which is six thousand square feet. You do have, you do meet the requirement for the overall lot area. You just do not have the lot width. And the house is not oversized, so in this case, I would go along with it. If they did not conform in both, I would be turning it down.
We wouldn't be here if we didn't comply with at least the lot area. I agree with you.
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions for the, for the planning witness?
I noticed that you didn't speak to the bedrooms of the current property or the potential bedrooms of the properties that were presented. How do you feel about the increase in the density of the population that you'd be generating through this?
I think we all are fully aware that Lake Hiawatha is a family-oriented community. Pretty much almost every home there has a family, so at this point, it's whether that lot is sustaining one family of a larger size or two, you know, average-sized families. And I believe it's a healthy balance here, the lot can sustain at the proportion of the house, of two minor-sized families living in Lake Hiawatha.
Okay. And, I mean, we've gotten report from sewage and water, and I don't think we got water, but we did get the sewage. And I guess from their perspective, there's not necessarily an issue. I'm just concerned about going from what was a three-bedroom house to two four-bedroom houses. So do you have any testimony on that?
I don't. I think that's a competitive market for real estate. I think it's an average home, four-bedroom home. We're seeing now everyone's working from home, doesn't mean four individuals, you know, will occupy these, you know, rooms. That's unforeseen. I can't speak to how the future will hold as far as, you know, what family moves in.
I appreciate that answer.
May I ask a follow-up question of Alex?
Sure.
Alex, can you tell me, based on your review of the ordinance, how is it that the ordinance regulates density?
It's based off the floor area, I mean, the lot area.
Okay. So is it fair to say then that in the R4 zone, it has already been established that an appropriate density is one house per every six thousand square feet?
Correct.
Okay, so density is tied to lot area and in this zone?
Correct.
Now, in other zones, you may have multiple units per acre or things like that, but in this zone, it's based on lot area. All right, I think that's a reasonable answer.
Okay. I'm trying to decide if I had any other questions.
Oh, you're rolling it.
Okay, I'll hold that for my, for my comments. With that said, I see that the board has completed their questions of the planner, so now I'll open it up to the public for questions of the planner. Your comments can still be held for later. Okay. Seeing nobody come forward with questions for the planner, I'll turn it back over to the attorney.
We had that one open question from Mr. Mayonecki as far as the height of the house to the peak. So, Mr. Mayonecki, I caution you, you're still under oath. Can you please address that comment if you...
The microphone?
You have that information now?
Yeah, yes. Lot 8.01 would be the height of the two lots. From finish, from the finished floor to the ridge is thirty-one and a half feet for essentially both, both houses. So when you do the average grade plane around it, the, based on the average grade plane for Lot 8.01, the building height to the ridge would be thirty-five point five feet, and for Lot 8.02 would be thirty-five point eight feet. Now, keep in mind, the way the ordinance is written, it's not to the ridge, it's to the midpoint. So where thirty-five foot is the maximum to the midpoint. So we're pretty much, you know, as you're at the maximum to the ridge.
Are there any follow-up questions based on that testimony?
No, change it.
Okay. Seeing none, Mr. McDonough?
No, no. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. McDonough is busy with his drones.
I'm sorry.
We've concluded our direct case.
Yeah. All right. So I'll open it up to the general public for comments at this time. Please take the mic, state and spell your name, and give your address for the record.
My name is Gail Amisigio, A-E-M-I-S-E-G-I-O. I reside at thirty-one Iroquois in Lake Hiawatha. I've been a homeowner in that area for over fifteen years, and on behalf of other homeowners who live there or near Iroquois, we did start a petition and went around to homeowners who, like myself, are against this. We're okay with looking at a single-family home, but the two homes, we have concerns. Overcrowding on the streets are one of them, which we have already. Overcrowding of schools, which is another one. And then all the other drainage issues, even though they were discussed here, River Drive is in a big flood area zone, and the area he's looking to put the homes, it's higher up, however, water goes down, and then you're dealing with River Drive, homeowners also flooding. I grew up in Clifton, New Jersey, where homes were close together. I moved away from that. I wanted a different type of life. I wanted more space. We don't want to be on top of one another in that little area. Yes, there are new homes being built, you know, Parsippany is changing, but we, we have lot sizes and coverages and widths and all that for a reason. And if we don't follow them, why even have zoning laws be put into place? So basically, we just want everyone to think about how the current homeowners feel and understand where we're coming from. And like we just said, we're, we know it's expanding, it's getting bigger and better in the area, but two homes we're just feeling is being a little materialistic. So we just really wanted to thank everybody for their time and just take this in consideration.
We, just so you know, we can't, I'm not discounting the value of the petition, but as a quasi-judicial body, we can't take non-notor, we can't take any statement that isn't provided by the person who's, who is here. So you have a petition with a bunch of names and you want to submit that to the board, the board can't accept that as an exhibit. We can accept your testimony that you've talked to your neighbors and that your neighbors feel a certain way, and that, that will be, that's part of the record. But the actual petition cannot be part of the record because it's not, A, it's not notarized, and B, those people are not here to testify themselves.
All right. Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? All right, in which case, I'll close the public portion and invite any members of the board to provide their comments. Mr. Mandel?
Yep. As the members of the board know, I am opposed to subdivisions, almost, I use the term religiously. But in this case, to me, it appears that if we were to deny it, and if the applicant went along with us denying it, he could in fact put up what you called before McMansion of five thousand, six thousand square feet, which would be totally legal, wouldn't even have to come before this board. It would just go right to the building department, as long as everything checked the box, that would go up, and that would be horrendous in that neighborhood. You know, I drive through Lake Hiawatha all the time, and there are some McMansions that have gone up. I think this particular application suits very well, you know. I drove through the area, and I saw all the narrow lot widths. Yours is sixty feet, but the neighbor on the other side is a forty-foot... Yours is 60 feet, but the neighbor on the other side is a 40-foot lot width. So I mean, this is going to fit in very well with the neighborhood. I appreciate your comments about the schools, we're concerned with that all the time, but tell you what, if they put in a 6,000-square-foot house, how many children do you think would be in that 6,000-square-foot house? Probably the same as would be in these two houses. So I don't see any reason to deny this application at all, honestly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, let's make work quickly.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Fergieri.
I tend to agree with Mr. Mandel's assessment of the, of the application. It once again brings us face-to-face with some of the rather broad language in the ordinance, particularly, excuse me, regarding height. It's a bugaboo of mine, the board members know that, and it seems every time we turn around, we're bumping into it, and when we get tired of bumping into it, I suspect something will happen. Until then, I, I mention it. And I, I do think there has been care put into this application, trying to take into account the nature of it and, and, and the neighborhood as well. And for those reasons, my initial reaction, I can't stand seeing, you know, facing global warming and, trees are important, and I know everybody has to make a living, but it just seems that sometimes we are so cavalier with cutting down these trees. I'm going to support the application, but it pains me to think of the loss of shade and frankly, the loss of oxygen from a tree that size coming down and being replaced with some shrubs. It, it's, it's tough for me, but that's my problem, not yours, right now, until the time comes when you need oxygen. So with that, I'm going to support this application and appreciate the presentation and the comments from the neighbors. It's, it's, it's been not the easiest decision for me here. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? All right, seeing none, I'll leave you for a closing statement.
Well, first, thank you, everybody, we appreciate all of your time, your consideration. This was a very well-thought-out application, you know, very rarely do you see people go to this extreme like, like Mr. Bott did, show you what it is. And as Mr. DiPiero had mentioned about the lot area, I don't jest, if we didn't meet the lot area, I wouldn't have represented here, because it's a tough justification, because lot area, this speaks density. And we have a situation where you have 12,000 square feet, the 6,000-square-foot zone, the density conforms. So that's why we're here, because we have something that complies with what you envisioned in your ordinance and density. And I, I know Mr. Bott for many years, he's a man of his word, he tells you this is what he's going to build. It's going to be really a betterment to the neighborhood. And neighborhoods either die or they, or they thrive. And I can tell you from what I see in Lake Hiawatha, it seems that there's revitalization on a private, from the private sector, people buying older houses, tearing them down, building new. It's, it's a neighborhood that's alive, and it's thriving. And it's thriving because of private investment, not because there's a heavy hand of some government that's telling you to do this or build that, or so many stories, et cetera. This is, this is what is necessary in Lake Hiawatha to see this neighborhood continue to thrive. And what Mr. Bott is proposing is taking down a house that's outlived its useful life. When they built that thing in 1940, it was never meant to last 200 years, and now it's time for it to be retired into a dumpster. And Mr. Bott is intending to build two beautiful new homes, which I submit to you that when you drive down the block, you can be pleased. So for those reasons, we ask that you approve the application.
Okay. Mr. Wenzel, do you have a list of the conditions of approval?
Yes, should the, should the board have a motion to approve, there will be several conditions of approval, which we can go through and make sure that council would agree with me on, but, you know, we, we need a motion and a second first.
Okay. Well, then with that, I'll go ahead and open it up to the board for a motion.
I would move approval of application number 21, Coen 520, CQC Builders LLC, 27 Iroquois Avenue, Block 516, Lot 8, granting the minor subdivision plan with a C variance, subject to...
And soil movement permit.
And soil movement permit, yes.
Subject to Mr. Dinsmore, if I may, pressure a collection...
Absolutely.
...that there, that there will be compliance with the Township Forester as to the tree removal and decisions made in terms of any replacement or placement of vegetation on site, including along the retaining wall in the front, the frontage, and along the sides. There will be conversations with the Township Forester as to those issues, and otherwise the home will comport with all the zoning bulk regulations of the district that are not asked for variance tonight, which would include the height, which we've had way too much discussion about.
I agree, but also, as presented, I want to make sure that it's as presented and not in terms of, in terms of the side lot setbacks.
We would put into any resolution of approval that the applicant would have to comply with the plans as submitted, subject to those plans being in compliance with Township Ordinance. Because if not in compliance with Township Ordinance, we don't want them to use those plans, we want them to use plans that are in compliance with Township Ordinance.
I just don't want them coming back and building something that's only six feet off the side lots instead of the amount. That's, that's really what I'm aiming at, is simply to make sure that the perspective that I was talking about before is maintained.
Right, it would be, and obviously, as we would normally put into our resolutions, as presented to the board.
Yeah.
Mr. Wenzel, do we have to put in the connection to the storm sewer?
No, 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 it's in the plans.
No, no, I would, my recommendation is up to the Township engineer.
I'm sorry.
Combination.
Right, right. Well, there would be, the statement would be, there would be a general compliance, I think the engineer witness basically indicated there would be compliance with the engineer's letter, and that obviously, as this gets more technical, and guys like Andrew and Justin, who have much greater knowledge of these things, will look at it and ensure compliance with all the stormwater discharge rates and connections and things like that, that's outside of our purview, so to speak.
So as per usual, they're agreeing to work with the township professionals, with the engineer and the forester, et cetera?
Right. I think council would agree on that.
Okay.
Mr. Wenzel, when you said comply with the height ordinance, did you mean the total height or height of the third floor?
The, as the township, the Township Ordinance height requirement.
Which means that it is limited in terms of height, total height, as well as the number of floors is limited to two and a half floors. So we have to meet both of those.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I believe that concludes the motion, based on the commentary.
That's my motion, I'm sticking with it.
Are you clear with that, Mr. Wenzel?
Crystal.
Okay. Do we have a second for the motion to approve?
Second, Didich.
Okay. Mr. Didich, second, all right. Nora, would you please call the vote?
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Mandel.
Yes.
Mealy.
No.
Napolitano.
No.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, we appreciate your time and your consideration.
Okay.
You could take them off the board and hold them and give them to me.
Nora, do you have all those extras?
I just need the one for, the one page with the four...
Can you hand down those pictures to Nora? I just want to make sure that our, our board secretary Steve has all the exhibits. Do you have the, Nora, do you have the, the one from the planner?
I have everything else.
Okay. Okay, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Are there any members of the board with other business to present?
We have one more, right, next week?
No, we have, we have... Nora, just to be correct, we have a minor...
We have a minor and regular next Monday. And that's it for the year.
On the 20th?
No.
13.
Next Monday.
A week from today.
The town has it wrong on the website.
See, I like the fact that Council DiPiero uses paper and pen, it's the only way you really can tell what's going on around here.
And since I have the wrong date, I cannot make the 13.
Okay, would you please just send me a reminder email?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mandel.
It's been brought up a number of times, can we somehow get the town council to redefine height?
I think you gotta, talk to gentlemen like this, outside of our, outside of our official jurisdiction.
Yes.
But he was a citizen, you can talk to him at Council DiPiero any time.
I will say that some language had been drafted at some point about the height regarding changing the way it's measured, making it be measured to the absolute highest point, and also from the finished, or, sorry, pre-construction grade as opposed to finished.
But?
That language could be acted on if the council so chose. I would also suggest looking at the use of cantilevering. That's just my two cents.
Thank you so much.
It can't be done between now and the end of the year, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But that's our complaint, too. We've been, Tom and I have been complaining about this for years.
For years, and as long as I've been on, it's always come up, and it seems to be an easy thing to correct.
It's a poor definition, we've been complaining.
Yeah, it was a one-two.
Okay.
But it's on our, it's on our side.
Excellent.
So we have a year-end review to send to the council that would be included?
I don't believe, yeah, well, I believe there's a, something from the zone, the zoning committee is usually the one that presents something to us as well, though.
Right.
And then I believe there are half...
Tom used to write that, yes.
Yeah, so I believe there's also certain items that we address at the end of each year in order to identify where certain challenges were, so perhaps that's something we'll put together at the next meeting.
But we've got multiple issues this year where the height became an issue.
Okay, so we want to make that one of the lists.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And so if everybody wants to come together at the next meeting, we'll conclude with discussion of the, of the items of, I guess...
Concern.
Areas of concern, in need of ordinance, potentially?
There you go.
Okay.
Ordinances in need of reconstruction or in need of...
I'm trying to think of what the Festivus term for that would be. That's what I'm getting to, Judy, so thank you for that. I will, I'll open it up to a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Judy, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
I personally don't think you should get rid of anything that was, you know, started in the 1940s.